With pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, under the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will take the roll.
Mr. Sextro.
Here.
Ms. McDaniel.
Here.
Mr. Putoff.
Here.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Okay, there being a full house. First question is, the minutes of the last meeting have been previously distributed. Are there any additions, corrections, or changes? I may not make it through the meeting in this way. Oh, that's okay. No, that's okay.
That's not been used.
Any additions, corrections, or changes?
No.
Clerk will take the roll. Or is there a motion to?
Accept them.
Accept the minutes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
I'm a mess. Minute had been approved. Committee report. Finance.
Hang in there, Mayor.
That's one way to get out of it. Okay, finance committee report. And. There we go. There we go. Okay, taxes. Taxes received total $21,187,736 for the year, which is an increase of $3,349,397 over last year's receipt, which receipts, and which is an increase of 18 percent. So December results, village total receipts December were $1,957,516, with expenditures of $1,662,718, a net positive of $293,797 for December. Year end, the village received exceeding expenditures by $3,653,800. This allowed additional appropriations of $2,366,315 to be added to the budget for 2024. The village has planned capital expenditures for 2025 totaling $4,695,000. In addition to the new service building project, and the CAC elevator project will incur large expenditures as progress is made for the year. There will be three ordinance that we will be voting on tonight. Gorman Heritage Farm, we would like to welcome Marcus Gardner, new executive director of Gorman Heritage Farm. He has a farming background from a community up north, and he's definitely got the right name of Gardner. And but he's been on board for just over, just barely over a week, and doing very well, and he wants to meet with all the individuals of the board members of the Gorman Heritage Farm and get acclimated as quickly as possible. Recreation, Oxford blood donations went well and may continue on a regular basis moving forward. Can, and now you can actually make your membership renewals online. You do not have to come in. So that's new this year. And it's no much fun. June 28th, from 6:30, and the fireworks will be at 8:20 by Rosy's. And the 19th, I think, is the last day to. For early bird prices. 260 visits with Santa, and then also 70 adults visit the meet and greet. Or there'll be two ordinance coming from the recreation department. Service engineering, 400 pounds of salt spread in 30 hours. That was actually a week and a half ago, or the early part of last week, or actually the weekend before. And then there was more spread this past weekend. Hats off to the service department. I deal with a lot of people in many different communities, and when they come through Evendale, they said, "God, you guys are amazing. I can't believe how clear your roads are. It's like it never even snowed." Memorial Tower is up and working. Thank you to the service group and James for getting that done. Gorman Heritage Farm trails and farmhouse work is completed. Fire department generator repair, still waiting for the contractor. And Baxter Park walking path is completed. And new building updates moving along on with the service building. However, there was a little bit of hillside slippage. Thank God we moved the location of the service building. It'd be sitting with a lot of dirt around it right now. But there is going to be a geotech investigation so we can correct that issue. Elevator ordinance, there are three bidders. Lowest bidder withdrew because of missing a section, and it will be awarded tonight, if approved, to the next bidder, who is the lowest and best. Spartan Drive janitorial service contract is signed and should be underway. And traffic counter, for all those who've been concerned about Cooper Road, traffic counter is located on Cooper Road and collecting data, and it'll be evaluated moving forward. Okay, and then also Chris Patterson distributed 2025 Evendale Safety Survey questionnaire that will be coming out to the residents hopefully in February.
Hopefully, if we can get it out a little sooner than that, but yes, shortly.
Okay. Don't want to take a look at it. I'm looking at it.
With amendments.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Any questions, additions? Please.
Okay. I'm going to start with the police first. I'm going to refer back to the item we've been discussing that came up at the town hall meeting about better ways to communicate with residents. So the committee has been meeting with the police department, police chief, about what can be done there. And what's been decided is that there's a product that one of our current providers offers called Civic Plus, which will allow residents to receive messages in whatever method they choose, you know, text, voice, whatever. Will also allow translations from one language to another. The expected cost of this is going to be around $6,500 annually to use that. Right now, we have our IT guru working with the department heads to get back to us with a plan of exactly how we're going to implement and exactly when we're going to implement it. But just wanted to give you some more status as to what's been going on there. And want to thank, in particular, the residents who have participated, and Susan Spraw, who has taken kind of a lead from a residential standpoint in working on this item with us. The Ohio Legislature has passed a bill to allow police departments to charge up to $75 to get a copy of body cam footage. And this is, I think, in response to the number of public records requests that are made and how much expense it requires for us to be able to provide, for us, for any police department, to be able to provide this. It will require some changes to our records policy to include this in there, but we were in agreement that this was something that we would need to change, our policies to make sure that we do charge for this. And subsequently seen, it's not, it's controversial, more controversial than I expected it to be, listening to some news reports.
We suspected it was probably going to be some lawsuits.
Okay. Yes. Right, right. And they were questioning whether that eliminates transparency, but anyway. So stay tuned, but just to make.
It makes sense, because our chief has told us that sometimes there are people who work two days, three days, four days to read that part that are not in public. Look at our department versus the city of Cincinnati, or large departments. You understand there are some 12 people full time. It was really, you could stop on the table. We'll work on that.
And that state legislation was 75, up to $75 an hour, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Up to, yep.
Yes. Yes. So moving on then to fire. There's a second reading on the ordinance regarding some updates to code covering sprinklers. There's an ordinance on the agenda tonight for contracting for the new ambulance. We talked about, you know, we did the fire truck last year. We would need to do the ambulance specifically to get the chassis going, which is going to be $70,000 of a total, what, I want to say $253,000. Don't count, quote me on that, that's close. I don't have it in my notes, of the total cost. It's going to be a 2026 model, but it'll likely take us to 2027 before we get the completed, finished ambulance. Also, we talked about some possible personnel needs that may occur later in the year in the fire department. So the fire department is currently reviewing some of the policies and procedures relative to our hiring practices. Once that comes, once that process is completed, then we will probably start the hiring process to be able to identify candidates and select some candidates to fill some vacancies coming down the road. Don't expect us to start that. Hopefully, we'll be there by the end of the quarter, but we need to be, wait till the fire department finishes reviewing their policies there. And I think that's it for fire. For cultural arts, we had successful programs like sparkling wine tasting in December. Sold out all three sessions. The Art Venture to Light Center in Louisville was also sold out. And the, we had several rentals in December, so that's a good sign. And classes were pushed back to this week. Did that still hold with this week's weather? That we actually started programming this week, so. And then there's an ordinance on the agenda, and I'm sure the mayor's going to speak too, probably, bids that were taken out as far as the upgrades that are going on in the cultural arts building. As far as building planning and code enforcement, there's going to be an ordinance on the agenda covering a lot split along Redding Road, just west of the Acres Golf Center. It's involving the Formica property. And so that ordinance is on tonight's agenda for consideration. Also, the former QTC building on Arrow Hub Boulevard was sold to Monte Incorporated. That's a family-owned and operated advanced manufacturing company that makes copper and aluminum conductors. The plan is to demolish the existing building and build a new 30,000 to 50,000 square foot building with room for 30,000 additions. So stay tuned for more on that. And enforced building permits were concerned. In the month of November, the building department received 18 new permit applications, issued 24 permits with an estimated construction cost of $1.8 million. That generated $9,500 in revenue. And I'm sure you all can repeat that, right? Quickly. And then the new online permitting process. Plans are working on that. We expect that to improve and streamline our process for dealing with permits. And it also allow you to track online the progress of a permit once it's been submitted. So that's continuing to be rolled out. It's not complete at this point. And that's our report.
Okay. Any additions, corrections, changes? Consider the committee report accepted. I have a couple things. The elevator project is to be started this month or next month for sure. It's $1.2 million, and it's going to be pretty nice then. There's some pictures floating around someplace. But I think it would be a good addition to. Homers, get filed with Rosy's against homers. And they have now counseled against us, which requires that we carry over our law director, and also requires that we bring in our insurance carrier, who will defend us in this situation. And we'll see where that goes from there. Kind of an interesting thing. Mr. Jeffords has brought the repairs of Memorial Tower, and he brought a video of two young people standing under the tower singing to the Christmas carols on the, on the video. And I was trying to take a look at you. It gets on ahead. Anything else?
Check your mic, Burke. Please check your mic. It's on.
The green was on.
Yeah, I turned it off when you were copying.
Okay. Let's go to the ordinances then. The first ordinance is 24-75 for a second reading. And I'd like permission to read it by title only. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
An ordinance amending the provisions of the codified ordinances of the Village of Evendale relating to the fire code, automatic sprinklers, firearms, and ventilation equipment. Now, we can either consider this a second reading tonight, or we could do the second and third reading. I understand you'd be comfortable with that, chief?
I'm comfortable with whatever you'd like to do. I can go to the third reading and also go through the process without an emergency.
Without, I'm sorry.
Without an emergency. So is it 30 days after passing?
I think it'd be 90 days then. 30, 30 days. You have not had anybody.
However you'd like to do it, I'm happy with it.
So. You have not had anybody come forward?
We have not.
No. He's contacted General Electric, we were most concerned about. You've contacted them, and they seem to accept it.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Well, the only other thing I think we talked about in the committee meeting was that given the time period between that, the holidays have occurred, and people wouldn't be necessarily paying attention to these kinds of things since our last council meeting. So it might advise us well to just wait till next month and do the third.
Okay, want to wait till next month?
Give it a third reading next month.
That'll be, that'll consist of the second reading then. Next is ordinance 25-01. I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from this vote.
You're the next one.
Not on this one.
No, next one. I got the wrong one, I'm sorry.
Yep, you're okay on this one.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
An ordinance approving the transfer of general and Arrow Hub TIF funds to various other funds and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to, this is the beginning of the year, get the pot going again, and so forth, that we have to do this ordinance? I'd like a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Now I'd like a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
I'd like a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 25-01 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 25-2. I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from this vote.
Gentlemen, it has to be excused, and so be granted. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to set 2025 part-time employee pay rate and declare it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Now a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 25-02 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 25-03. I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
An ordinance appointing, making appointment to the Recreation Commission in the Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. I've appointed Bob Luther as the new member of the Recreation Commission. He's willing to get up at 7 o'clock in the morning, so. Can I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Next, I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
And now declare the ordinance 25-03 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 25-04. Like permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the payment of amounts due upon certain contracts requiring certification of availability of funds and declaring it as an emergency. It's our then and now ordinance. I need a motion to, excuse me, approve, suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency. Adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Now the motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 25-04 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-05. I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr., was it Mr. Burke? Mr. Burke.
Mr. Patterson.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Allowing, an ordinance allowing the mayor to sign a contract with Horton Emergency Vehicles for the delivery of a 2026 emergency medical vehicle for the chassis price of $70,000 and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson. Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now, declare ordinance 25-05 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 25-06, and I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the ADA improvements for the Evendale Cultural Arts Center and project and declaring it as an emergency. This is for the construction of the elevator. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 25-06 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-07. And I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire Missy Gruber as a part-time childcare attendant for the Recreation Department and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now, I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now, I declare ordinance 25-07 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 25-08. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
An ordinance approving a subdivision plat providing for the division of property west of Redding Road, currently identified as parcel 6110020-00430 and declaring as, declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to approve the suspension of the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now, I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Okay. Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Now, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Now, I need ordinance 25-08 adopted as an emergency. That's all I've got on my agenda. If anybody else has anything else?
I just want to say thank you for finally getting the elevator passed. We've heard this for 15 or 20 years about the need for handicap accessibility. And the combination of that with the improvements for the restrooms is going to, going to be a big deal for the community.
We got about $350,000 from the state of Ohio for the construction. The rest of it, we got about $100,000 from a private source, but that went into the planning and the engineering work and everything that was done. And so, the village is footing the rest of the bill. I think it's the right move for the village.
It's been a long time coming.
Long time coming. It's going to be great. If you see a picture of it, it's pretty neat.
Nice.
And I think everybody, everybody will like it, especially my wife.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.